Okay, guys. Seven o'clock. Several items tonight. We have mentioned it a couple times informally, and I think at a couple of the meeting meetings. Citizens have brought up the concern about the situation over eight thirty eight Ross Street, which is the, um, used to be a rest home that has been through bankruptcy, irate, Charles, out of bankruptcy.
Uh, bankruptcy is foreclosed, you name it, it's dead circle of people.
It's been going on for five, six years.
Nine, six years.
Nine, six years. We went back and there's been, police and fire both here talking about it. Yes, several calls in public in reference to vandalism, uh, people actually living in the facility. And so we have, um, began this process of looking at potentially demolition. As all you all know, we don't do many demolitions. All these communities, one of the first, I rate, invasion demolitions. Publicist Dove Food Plant, is that right, Bob, twenty years ago? So, uh, Melvin has worked with a number of staff people of this, and he's got some pictures of all those background. There's concerns right there, which is in the public domain.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor Council, the subject property is located on Northwest Quadrant of Ross Street. And this is Ross Street right here, and Sharp Road. And you can access the property either off of Sharp Road here, this is where the main office used to be, or come out of Ross Street. Um, there, again, there's three structures here, okay? This is a large structure in the middle, and then two on either side. This is a, as Harold was talking about, a commercial demolition. You used to say in residential, and as Harold says, ten while since we've done a commercial demolition. The things get involved with commercial demolitions that we don't see with residential. Uh, for example, asbestos is an issue that you have to deal with in a commercial structure. So things like that come into play. Um, I'll pan through some pictures here as I go through some of the information, just to try to combine, uh, efforts. Some of what these hands, uh, as I've talked to you about, Ray Rice, our inspector general, he's here tonight in case you have specific questions. Uh, he deemed the property to be unsafe and imminent hazard, primarily due to several things. One is structural issues. Um, columns in front of the units have been removed for salvage value, and that's left to the front, some of the front porch is in a structurally deficient position. And of course, there was a fire that caused some structural damage. There's an environmental hazards related to the fact that pools and sinks have been removed, and that exposes the property of sulfur gases. Um, there is a, of course, susceptibility to fire to the property, particularly since it's in an unsecured state. That's a big piece of this. As Charles alluded, nobody's really claiming, uh, much interest in this property. Probably financially driven for those reasons, but so nobody really wants to take the time or effort to secure this property. And that has been documented through fire inspection reports that have been done over the last couple of years. Uh, and of course, there's been a history of, um, an evidence of vaginas in the building, and it's considered a public nuisance as well. So, um, again, raise your count, specific questions about why we deemed it unsafe and imminent hazard. As Harold indicated, police and fire have had numerous responses. PD has had twenty-three responses to this property in the last couple of years. Uh, and that includes suspicious persons or conditions, trespassing, breaking and entering. Fire has done numerous inspections and had three responses since, uh, June of two thousand eleven, related to medical hazardous conditions, and there was a fire, as you can see. So, the history of this is in January twenty-four, two thousand twelve, and of course, we had complaints prior to that, but that's when Ray condemned the buildings, um, on inspection. And notices were immediately sent out to parties that had an interest in the property, and we based that on the final opinion that was done. And then in February eighteen, two thousand thirteen, a hearing was held, and no one from, any of the notified parties came to that hearing. At the hearing, Ray gave the order to demolish it by March twenty of two thousand thirteen, and of course, notices were sent to the parties' interest, uh, to that effect. And since the demolition order was not carried out or complied with, uh, since then, staff has had appraisal done, and we've also received bids on the demolition. Legal has reviewed the case, and I believe Charles is correct, but wrong, but fair to say, you think, think everything's in order for a municipal demolition?
Fire review of the case, all the proper procedures were followed, the notes were given, and the law's involved. Give more notice than is necessary for that. And publication of all of the known unknown. I'm satisfied, but possession's probably followed to the.
What did happen to this property when it bankrupted?
Well, it's primarily the foreclosure issue. And the rest of the bankrupts in some of the parties involved, uh, there was a second mortgage foreclosure. The first mortgage holder is never done anything. Uh, they are afraid the foreclosure is a foreclosure, get to take the property. And nobody wants to say that we're in possession. So that is not uncommon in some of the buildings that the bank would rather put in right to all saw, rather than being saddled with a caretaker to pick something up, which is the label might for a hand to go to.
So, um, based on my information, of course, staff has recommended that, you know, we have a condemnation of order to demolish, uh, deemed as unsafe and imminent hazard, and we feel like this property needs to be demolished. Uh, so that's something that we're asking you to consider. Uh, if you want to proceed forward after tonight, uh, in terms of schedule, uh, we would follow up and send notices out to the parties' interests, letting them know that council was considering approving a demolition. And that would probably be scheduled for the November fifth council meeting, um, for to request approval of a demolition ordinance, and this would also require budgeting, because there aren't funds budgeted for this already. And so I've, I've put together the numbers in the packet. It's nine three thousand, eight hundred and forty, and that would include the low bid of eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, as well as a fifty percent contingency. I talked about asbestos earlier, the asbestos portion of that eighty-one thousand is about eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, just to give you an idea of how that impacted it. Um, so, and so if that gets approved in November fifth, if we go along with that schedule, it would probably take one to two months, uh, for demolition. So we hope by the end of the year, we're going to have the property in the state.
Out of curiosity, is the asbestos in the same under the floor? Floor?
And to try to save some money, city forces would assist with some of the asphalt and the parking lots, uh, trying to get it out, so you'd end up, what you'd end up with is this grass area that could be maintained.
And we have to wait for this to be closed before the city take, can the city take ownership of it?
Actually, what we, procedure, after we adopt the demolition ordinance, we demolish the property and we dock it a lien against the land in the same manner that you would make this property. Typically, for residential units, we just let the lien sit there, and sooner or later somebody will pay it, clean the lot. On this one, we probably come back after the first of the year and recommend that council all by us foreclose the lien. We have foreclosure proceedings, we'll have to go through, sell the property, and then fit in ourselves into the.
And this lien takes priority over?
It's ahead of mortgages and the court of justice.
So in foreclosing on that lien, you're wiping out all stuff?
Well, we got a whole equity ownership, a whole.
I'd like to go into that one more time, if you would, Joe. This is expensive.
Procedure, uh, most of the council has obviously ordered us to do a lesson. We let the contracts, we let the town build them, and then we dock it to have this lien and look to keep up here, and also dock it to the grant as well, those of them I involved. A week, thirty, sixty days after that day, but then we will institute an action foreclose. And then it'll be more of a mortgage foreclosure, or a tax foreclosure, typically taken to sale. We sell the lien, electric sale, we sell the property to San Francisco. And that sale, uh, we would probably ever have bid, we still threw out demolition calls, so it didn't be, it didn't probably be such a city, so if the lien, whatever, we're afraid to bring a very nominal number. And I think we probably could have better use it as habitat, as a chair and views, or as a park space, or something like that. We probably wouldn't have been doing that, we couldn't base bids.
Now, I mean, tanks are everything that happens around me, sort of contingent liability we walk into.
I don't know what it affects. Nothing showed up in the emergency.
We'll probably have an environment review down the corporate area. We may be in the same position as other banks and things like that.
If you recall, we're down the street, a couple years ago, there, there was a back behind all the hell, we have a lot of stuff that was in the dump back there. There's a ton of tanks, uh, living at Rass, and all sorts of stuff that we have to be in cleanup.
And I think there's a north of that, we have to clean all that up.
That ought to really improve when habitat is cleared out.
Scroll down, I put it down.
Oh, uh, this is, you can't really go the other way.
That's where it goes.
Yeah. I could pull it to earth if you really need to.
Well, even if the city doesn't come out financially in this, quite frankly, this is kind of one of the best to turn around and try to change it, turn neighborhood from transition downward to a transition back and up.
We heard from a neighborhood meeting about this at Fairchild.
Did you do that for homes there on Ross Street that are pretty well maintained?
Was the train a part of the layout?
Home of the street.
Sharp Road.
Home of the street.
Okay.
Home of the Sharp Road.
Yeah.
You see?
If, uh, I don't know if you sort of base in direction of council and jobs, if we've got any kind of consensus.
Bob, would you agree with, you agree with?
Yeah.
Okay, so no, we've got a consensus, then we go forward with, um, and bids of rest of firms to, we have on this. Okay, um, as you all obviously are very knowledgeable of our, uh, efforts with the Westbrook treatment plants, uh, those projects are coming to an end, and we have some updates, and also some, uh, issues that we're dealing with, real good those projects. So, tonight, Eric Hilton and Bob Addison will be presenting all actions of the division. Eric has, uh, worked as our project manager on all these projects from, from beginning to now, so, gentlemen. I think we've included some pictures to kind of show you exactly what went on out there.
Thank you, Eric. If you'll recall, back in two thousand nine, General Assembly passed the, uh, the first set of Jordan Lake rules after, uh, much debate and, uh, and back and forth for several years. Um, under those original rules, um, there were, there were stormwater rules and wastewater rules, and we'll talk specifically about the wastewater rules tonight. Um, we were required to comply with, uh, with certain nutrient removal requirements, um, specifically to meet phosphorus compliance by twenty-ten and nitrogen compliance by twenty-sixteen. Um, and since that time, compliance for the nitrogen has been extended several times. Now, I think it's currently, if a plant is authorized, had gone through design and have authorization to construct by twenty-nineteen and completion by twenty-twenty-one, I think is what Berks says right now, but, um, we're way ahead of that, that timeframe. In two thousand nine, we, I mean, two thousand, well, two thousand nine we started, two thousand and ten, we issued, uh, the first round of bonds to finance for projects. And, um, the, uh, the two thousand and ten project included the work we did at Stony Creek Dam and Lake Hamak Dam, and also the first round for our nutrient improvements at the plants for the filter replacement at the South Plant. This slide gives an overview of where we are. We completed all three of these projects. The total, um, estimated for those projects was about twelve point nine million. Actual, um, design, construction, and contract administration, through engineering, came in about twelve point four million, so, um, came in about four hundred and seventy-one thousand in good, those three projects combined. Um, Eric will talk a little bit more about the filter project in a minute. Um, the, uh, the dam projects were probably the smoothest project you could ask for. We had a good contractor that came in and started working from day one, good engineering, and, uh, hit very few, uh, unexpected, um, issues with, with the projects for good weather ahead of time, understood the, under budget. Um, the filter project, um, Jared will give you a little bit more detail. Extended over the completion time, which required some additional engineering costs, but, um, working with the contractor, the project actually came in under budget also. So I'll, I'll turn this over to Eric, and he can, he can pick it up with the, uh, the overview on the nutrient project.
Yeah, as Bob mentioned, um, I want to give you kind of a summary on the three projects I've been managing, and that would be the filter project and the two nutrient upgrade projects. Just kind of refresh your memory, we've got, um, the filter project is closed out now. It was a five point seven million dollar project. These are all in round numbers, I'll page you on. As an engineer, I deal in round numbers, and it gets you in trouble with the counts. Anyway.
You know.
Five point seven million to filter job, uh, as Bob mentioned, the original contract completion was October of, uh, I'm sorry, it should have been twelve, but, uh, we extended the project to December of twelve, that completion date should be October of twelve. It is complete now. The two nutrient upgrade projects, at East, we had a six point eight million dollar contract. Completion date was July of this year, and we've extended it to July, July tenth, we extended it to July twenty-second. At the South Plant, it was nine point eight million dollar job, and that included one point three million dollars of generator capacity. So, the nutrient upgrade portion was similar in magnitude to East, a little bit larger, but the generator pushed the price tag up quite a bit. Uh, it was originally scheduled to be complete July of this year, and we've extended it so far to September this year.
Which each of those time extensions that we brought up to council and then you go through.
Uh, the filter project, uh, full detail on that, Herring Construction, uh, did that project, they also hold the contract for the East Nutrient Upgrade Project. We've resolved most of the minor crunches, those items, there's really nothing left lingering on that project, we're in the warranty phase on it. We've been operating it for six months successfully. The quality of the work by Herring Construction is excellent, and we have no quarrel at all. Their work quality, uh, we're currently meeting our discharge limits through the filters. The operations personnel are satisfied with the, with the performance of the facility. And the final project cost was seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars under the contract now, and that's due to unused contingency that we returned back and liquidated damage payments due to the extension of contracts for the old run of the contracts getting. So that, that was a successful project. There's a picture of the filter facility, um, your filter banks back here, electrical control building, blower building back here, that's the stairwell downstairs, there's a tremendous amount of pipe and valve under this that you can't see. All this paving and seating is new, they did an excellent job in paving this job, just my personal opinion. We had perfect conditions this summer, the grass looks like it's been there for ten years. It's a nice looking facility right here.
There's, uh, two stories underground there.
Yeah, just here. Yeah, the, the real stuff's underground. Uh, the East Nutrient Project, just some facts to let you understand where six point eight million dollars can go. We had six hundred and thirty-five feet of pipe that we put in, it's at least twenty-four inches in diameter, we had pipes twenty-four, thirty, and thirty-six that we put in, and a few small pieces of forty-eight. We, uh, put three thousand one hundred and forty feet of new pipe that was less than twenty-four inches in diameter in this project. Good with numbers, you know, that's over half a mile of new pipe. We demolished eight hundred and seventy feet of pipe, and that was mainly large pipe. We poured fourteen hundred cubic yards of concrete, and if you don't deal in concrete all the time, if you want to pave a residential driveway, you can get one three point two miles long of that amount of concrete if you really want to do it. We put in two thousand feet of duct bank, I'll show you what duct bank gives them then, eighty-one thousand feet of conduit, five hundred and twenty-five thousand feet of wire, and that's essentially fifteen miles of conduit, nine nine miles of water pulled through it. So it's a large scale project, and just to show you some photos of finished work and the work in progress, one of the major pieces of these projects was to change the way we aerate the wastewater. You have to give oxygen to the microorganisms that break down the organic material in the wastewater, and to give them that oxygen, you have to pump air through the wastewater stream. We used to have a, a system that was good as day, but it's day and past, and we went to a new system that's called fine bubble diffusion. It's much more energy efficient, much more, uh, biologically efficient in transferring that oxygen, and this is a picture of that. What you have here is these large pipes coming down, that supply air to this network of, uh, diffusers, and each one of these caps is permeable, so it's a giant aquarium bubbler, if you will, underneath the wastewater ponds. And we put these in, in, uh, both East and South. This is just the best picture I have, but it looks the same in South as well. Uh, we also were doing work at the Headworks, which is where the influent stream comes into the treatment plant. Uh, this is the guys pouring concrete. You can see in the background the bypass pumping, I've got some more pictures of that, and I'll discuss that in a minute. But we're doing major rework here, we're putting a new bar screen in to, uh, remove debris that comes in along with the wastewater, it clogs up our pumps and disrupts our process. The way the East Plant was constructed is you had two very large basins to aerate the water, and instead of two large basins, we made four smaller basins, and inside of these basins is where those aeration pipes go that I just showed you. So that picture was taken on the other side, which is complete, looking down this chute, uh, where the wastewater will go. Most of your four hundred and hundred yards of concrete is going in these walls that are inside these basins, and we put mixers and pumps in here to distribute the water to remove the nutrients like we need to for compliance. That's a, a large scale concrete pour right there, very complex, a lot of rebar, um, you have to crane in all the concrete, makes it much more complicated to just pour the slabs. The more difficult thing about these two projects, at both sites, we had to bypass the normal pumping operation of the plant while we did this work. This is like open heart surgery while you're still working every day, essentially. These are the heart-lung bypass machines for the plants. We have to take influent water from where it comes in the pipe, from all the collectors, and pump it up the hill to process it. We had to take all the pump stations that we used to use offline to do the rework and the refurb and the upgrades, so we had to install, uh, standby diesel pumps that run twenty-four seven, and pipe it all together, pull it out of a manhole, pump it up the hill into the equalization basin where it goes for other process. This is a picture of the complexity of the piping and bypass pumping that's necessary to do this. These pumps have been operating for months, uh, without interruption, without any hiccup, so, very good job by the contractor to make this happen. This is a very complex element of these projects that has a lot of risk associated with it, so we went through great meetings to make sure we had these designs down, and they leak tested everything properly before we put the system into operation. Once you put the system into operation and you start to rework the pump station, there's no going back, so this system has to work for whatever time period you're in the pump station.
And to give a little context to that, the railroad track is kind of a rhythm line, that everything north and east of the railroad track is flowing in the city, is flowing to the, the East Plant. These ponds had to handle all, all the flow from that part of the city to keep the plant operating while they're doing the work.
Uh, this is some of the large diameter piping I was talking to you about, this is a tie-in we made on the north side of the, uh, aeration basins. Dig up the ground, make sure we didn't cut anything we had to have, and then put new pipe in and bolt it all up. This is a duct bank. What a duct bank is, this is where your electrical service runs through your plant property. You take conduit and dig a trench and lay the conduit out, and then you encase the conduit in concrete once you get the wire pulled through it. That protects the conduit against backhoes and, and other destructive devices that make them in contact with undergrounds. So that's what an electrical duct bank is, each one of these is a conduit, two inch, probably mostly two inches and one inch stuff in there that we pull wire through.
All that metal conduit.
What's that? That's plastic, since it's encased in concrete, use the cheaper PVC stuff. Uh, the status on the East Plant, Herring Construction Company, as I mentioned, holds this contract, the project is currently seventy-one days late. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars left of our original two hundred and fifty thousand project contingency, so we're, we're past the point, we should be complete, we still have about half our contingency funds remaining, which is good, that's a testament to the engineers and the project folks that tried to execute this work as it was designed. The work volume has been fine, we have a quarrel there. The pace right now is good, the project got behind early due to some issues with Herring, but they've worked to catch up and, uh, are on track to, to finish in probably a couple of months.
Do you have any calls?
We do, we're gonna, I'm gonna have a whole slide on liquidated damages, Mayor, I'll talk about that in detail. South Plant, same kind of facts, it's a larger scale project, we disrupted almost every pipe in that plant to some degree or another. Twelve hundred and fifty feet of large pipe, nineteen hundred feet of small pipe, almost three thousand feet of pipe demolished, uh, same kind of concrete pour, more conduit and more wire in this facility. Uh, we are upgrading a lot of controls at this facility, we're putting automatic controls in, where the operators had to do everything manually before we can run everything off of a PLC and computer. So this is a more complex project, plus it has the generator add on. These are the pump bypass pumps at South, uh, this is a, a shot of, of a unit of pumps, this is a standby, uh, let's see, that's the diesel and that's the electric. We had three electrics and two diesels over there, that's just two of the five pumps that we had. We had five individual lines running up the hill for the equalization basin from the pump station. This influent pump station work was much more intense than, than the East Plant. They spent around five months of jackhammering concrete out of the pump station to enlarge it and install the new pumps that we put in. At the East Plant, all we did was reconfigure some piping and add two small pumps. At the South Plant, we added four brand new, large, two hundred horsepower pumps to pump influent water through the plant. And the concrete they had to remove to make all that possible, it's sitting underwater for about forty years, some of the hardest concrete that they had ever seen, and it took them a lot longer to get rid of it than they expected, and it was a very intensive, very intensive project. They had to lift by buckets all the debris out of that hole, it was, it was extraordinary to watch. I, I talked to the guys in the project, said this is mining, isn't construction when you got down in the hole. These are some of the pipe tie-ins, we poured a number of new, uh, splitter boxes to be able to redirect flow, this is an example of that, we removed pipe from existing, put new pipe in, had to demos, some of that, repipe it all up. That's a picture of, of the disturbance in the ground around some of these splitter boxes. Uh, we've got a spoil pile back here, you can see, that we've been working with throughout the two projects, filter and nutrient upgrade, so we moved a tremendous amount of dirt. There's very little ground at the South Plant that hasn't been dug up in the last year and a half, been a very intrusive project to the operations folks. That's kind of the scope of how deep in the ground these guys are working, there's a fellow down there at one of the, uh, pipes in one of the splitter boxes, some of the, uh, pipe runs that we've uncovered there. Now, the status on the South Plant, HG Reynolds holds the contract for this, the project's twenty-two days late because we granted them sixty days of extension. We only have thirteen thousand dollars of contingency remaining on this project, but there's a little caveat to that, this project was really underfunded for contingency, it was really only about. It was really only about two and a half percent of the total project cost. Typically, you have about five percent of your project amount in contingency. But we added a generator, and the project was larger to start with, and we really never accounted for that contingency fund. So we have exhausted the contingency on this project right now. And we're going to ask for an increase in contingency funding. I'll explain that in a minute. We have saved on the contract forty thousand dollars in solid removal. Now let me tell you what that means. When we take down all these basins that have held wastewater down there for years and years and years, there's grit and solids that have built up in the bottom of those basins, and we had to remove that to do our work. We had a unit price and an allowance in our contracts to do that, and we came in under those, partly just due to the way things happened, but also the plant guys did a very good job of removing the material themselves without turning over to the contractor to remove, because it cost us money to pay the contractor to take away. The plant staff did a really good job trying to get as much of that out themselves as they could and deal with it themselves. So part of that money we earned by doing it ourselves. The work quality has been acceptable on that project. The pace has increased to meet the contract completion date. And as I said, the contingency funds are exhausted, and we're going to need some more. Since some of the energy got through, I have to put in an energy blower here. So pause for sponsors, commercial representation. The aeration equipment, some of the pumping changes we've made have yielded some energy savings. So far, we've seen a sixteen percent reduction in power consumption while we've been in construction. Now, at the East Plant, the contractor was paying to pump the water with a diesel-powered pump. At the South Plant, they used electric pumps, and we paid the bill. That just happened to be how the contracts work out. But be that as it may, the numbers that we've achieved in the last year for energy savings have also been during some of the wettest weather we've had, recent memory. And what that means is, when you have a lot of rain, you have inflow and infiltration that goes into the plant in terms of extra volume. And that extra water has to be pumped, and that extra pumping takes energy, and that energy costs us money. So we've actually saved money in one of the wettest spring and summers that we've seen. And the good thing about this is, all the energy savings are permanent. The increased aeration efficiency, the increased pumping efficiency, and all the other modifications we've made to the process itself will yield energy savings going forward. So that concludes our sponsors content for energy. In all seriousness, this was a great project for energy. We're going to save money as the city for decades.
When we were in the design phase, we looked for areas where we could see potential energy savings.
Now, to the Mayor's question about liquidated damages, the contracts all have a clause in there that if the contractor does not finish when he says he's going to finish, then he's got to pay us a penalty. In contracting language, that's called liquidated damages. The projects all have the clause. What that does is it protects the city from costs that we incur due to contract extension, whether it be because we have to comply a different way, we have to use more of our time and energy to manage the contracts, more engineering resources, whatever the case may be. The contracts are constructed to allow us, to charge the contractor eighteen hundred dollars per calendar day for owner's damage and engineer's damage. That's the total per-day charge that we're legally able to impose on them. We made an agreement early on with the contractors when we saw that they were not completing the project on schedule. We said, "We will not assess you this at eighteen hundred dollars a day. We will assess you only what it cost us out of pocket to keep these projects going." Engineer's cost, construction supervision, those are the two main things. Now, we do that because, you know, if you rack up enough days, you can bankrupt a contractor with a penalty clause like that. And that doesn't do anybody any good. We're not trying to make money on contractors. And they appreciate that, and they're much more willing to negotiate change orders and schedule extensions if they know that upfront you're not trying to hurt them with the LD liquidated damage clause. So what that adds up to be, while we're in construction phase, it's about twelve hundred dollars a day actual charge that it costs us to maintain. And after construction ceases, and we don't have to have anybody out on the site every day from the engineering company, it's only about four hundred fifty dollars a day to go through all the paperwork and project closeout phase. The way the damages will be paid to us, we have a retainage that we keep out of every invoice. We keep five percent back as retainage, and we will deduct the liquidated damage amount from that retainage. And then the final change order that we issue the contractor for final payment will include the deduct for liquidated damages offset by the retainage. So they'll get a smaller retainage amount back to them, essentially is what happens. So it makes sense. Liquidated damages are not used in contracting. That stuff can get a little bit twisted.
That contract that's on a bill of cycle when they submit invoices every ninety days, thirty days, or ten days?
Every month. Now, talking about the engineer's funding and liquidated damages, Hazen Sawyer, you may remember, is an engineer of record. We gave them a contract for engineering services that included design, bid, construction office, and resident observation. And what that means is, during construction, we have a project manager with Hazen Sawyer that works directly with us. All of the administrative functions plus any engineering support that's needed during construction, all comes out of that CA amount right there. We've had a person at East and a person at South to, every day, forty hours a week, watch the construction process to make sure we're getting what we're paying for. And that's what resident observation is. These are the total amounts for the two plants. The way we structured this contract and design through the construction administration, these three items right here were fixed price on some contracts. The resident observation was timed in materials, because if they finished early, we didn't want to have to pay somebody for nothing. And if they finished late, we wanted to account for that. So they gave us a time and expense not to exceed number for these two activities. Now, we have depleted the engineering funding because we're now past completion date on the projects. There have been several things to deplete our funding. We've had several unexpected issues occur at the South and the East Plants that required more feet, more office engineering support than we anticipated. There have been some project management challenges, just coordinating the complexity of the work that the project manager for Hazen Sawyer had to spend more time on. And then the schedule delays that require construction admin and observation as we go past the date. So to get us through to contract completion, we need additional engineering funding not to exceed of two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars at South and two hundred fifteen thousand dollars at East. Now, that's not the amount of money that's going to come out of our pocket. That's just the amount of money we need to go through to finish the project. Liquidated damages will cover all of about fifty thousand dollars of that. So at the end of the project, when we get the retainage payment out to them, we'll have deducted all the liquidated damages. So net out-of-pocket from the city of all these numbers is fifty thousand dollars. And that fifty thousand is really just to pay for these unexpected issues and project management issues that we could face if the project didn't finish on time.
So were you reduced liquidated damages to our actual cost overruns that we're going to incur? The fifty thousand remaining are really sort of like change orders, small stuff? Is that what you're saying?
Right. It's technical issues that arose during the construction. We hit it underground, so we didn't expect. We had some process problems. We haven't.
So we didn't let them off the hook for anything they had done. We just had some minor changes.
Like I say, we would have paid that money essentially if we'd have finished on time. We were tracking pretty much on the schedule, but the CA has always been a little bit ahead of the project schedule because of those issues. I don't want to go past that too fast. Everybody clear on what I'm driving at with the way the LDs work and what's actually coming out of our pocket there? For the South Plant, contingency funds. We right now have on books about ninety-three thousand dollars worth of change orders we need to put in place. These are the things that have to happen to make the project go. Again, the issues that we found during construction, things were missed during design, this, you know, small things that just add up over time. The typical contingency, like I said on this project, will be about five percent, so that'd be about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We had two fifty to start with, and we would recommend that we increase our contingency funding available by an extra hundred thousand. So that brings up three fifty, which is still under typical four ninety, but we do need that extra contingency to clean up the last few change orders.
And total at South Plant, we've looked at it.
Nine? Point nine. I think it's nine point eight. Go to nine point nine?
Yeah. That's the total contracts.
An increase in contingency just on the South, the nine thousand would be just on the South Plant?
South Plant only, because we're one hundred and thirty thousand, or one hundred and twenty thousand of the good at East. Changing gears again, I want to make you aware of an issue we've run into. This is one of the things that's consumed some of our engineering money. We've run into an electrical issue at the South Plant. As I mentioned, we put in brand-new influent pumps and variable-speed drives. These are the pumps that lift the water from the pipe that brings it to the plant up the hill to the basin so it can process. These are four two-hundred horsepower pumps and two hundred and twenty-five horsepower pumps, I believe. So we've got six pumps total. We had premature failure on one of the pump motors and three of the drives already. We've worked extremely hard trying to figure out what the cause of this has been, and we have not arrived at a definitive cause. We have two competing theories right now. But one of the problems could lie with our existing infrastructure, our electrical gear. Now, the question, who pays for the things that have been damaged, is still in debate. We'll debate that for quite a while, I think. But the fact of the matter is, our electrical design out there is a legacy design. It's got a grounding system that's not typically found anymore in industrial construction. And the newer, more modern, more sensitive electrical equipment is not really happy with that old legacy design. So in simple terms, the electrical distribution system down at the pump station may have to be upgraded, and that would be an additional cost. Now, we would not hold this project up because of the liquidated damage issues and, you know, just practical issues. We would not hold the project up for that issue. We would make that standalone project. We would manage and execute ourselves. We may go to Hazen Sawyer for some engineering support on that, but it would be dispossessed from the nutrient upgrade contract. We do that standalone. This is in the early phases. I can't really tell you anything more than this. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I wanted to at least get it out in front of you so you wouldn't be surprised in a couple of months when I come back with another presentation.
Premature failure on the pump motor and the drives, is that, is that a, were they damaged?
Yes.
So it's not just an electrical issue? And assuming those, we've looked at all the engineering designs, and those motors and drives are capable of handling load, were?
Yes, yes. That's the first thing you look at, is the basics. This is an emotional issue. At this point right now, we're trying to get past the emotion between the vendors and the construction company and the city. And if you've got a brand-new system and it doesn't run like you want it to, that never makes anybody happy. So we're trying to get to the facts of the matter and work out a solution.
Is the upgrade of the electrical, that's something that should be considered as part of this project?
That's a good question. And when you get into a situation like this, what always happens is, looking back, you can say, "Oh, yeah, we should have thought of that." But going forward, you notice that it's like that. We had in our bid documents and our specifications that we had a system like this. The vendors knew that. But what that really means doesn't become apparent until you put this equipment in service and see how it performs. So I don't personally think it's fair to say, "Yeah, we should have seen that coming." It would have been almost sheer luck if the engineer had picked that up and said, "You know, we probably ought to upgrade this." And honestly, what we probably would have done at that point was bid it as an alternate. We'd have seen the price and said, "We'll probably just not do that and see what happens." So, I mean, I hate to be that blunt, but it doesn't matter, but I think that's probably what would have happened because going into it, we all said, "Probably won't be a problem. We know it's an old system, but it should be okay." Now it's not okay, and we're going to have to fix it, so.
If you got a call from the tourists over here, they go, "The grade from where this is pumped at, that's down the bottom." And we went down, way down the bottom. And it's a pretty good grade up to where everything has to go. So this is a major effort to get everything up that hill. If you recall, I think when we were out there, there's been a big rain, and we talked about the INI on the inflow coming in, that big bar screen down there catching it, and much of that's wastewater, like sometimes it comes in. That's why this whole deal with the summer this year with the amount of INI we had, especially in some of our neighboring cities that we treat, whose systems are older, pipes and so forth, more INI comes as a result of that. So South Plant also, when I talked to the guys, we found a lot, how do I put this? We found a lot of things that were not on the design. We found pipes that wasn't supposed to be where they were.
Well, you guys gave an update of that. I mean, a lot of that. The last two change orders, we talked about how pipes.
So the amount of earth, and I think Eric mentioned, we moved out there was considerable, this, for the whole process of things.
Frank, is that some stuff you were dating back to what happened those days? I'll only give you where it was.
Folks in those thirty, forty years ago didn't value as-built construction drawings as highly as we value them today. So we've learned to value having accurate underground drawings. But anyway, that's the electrical issue. We'll have more come to you with that when we get further down the road investigation. Just to summarize where we are, both projects at South and East should be functionally complete this summer. And what that means is, the equipment we run and will be treated the way it's watered like we're supposed to, and we'll be down to documentation, closeout, bunch lists, that kind of thing. The project closeout, given the complexity of these projects and the way the contractors have been working, will probably take an additional few months, and that'll take some more engineering time to work through all the documents and O&amp;Ms and, you know, just as-built drawings and things that it takes to clean up a project of this size. We will need additional funds, but the liquidated damage will cover about ninety percent of the additional funding. The electrical issue will take additional funding beyond anything I've talked about tonight to resolve. So I just want you to be okay with that and ask any questions you need to understand. That will take a little more money than anything I've discussed so far. The plant operation has definitely improved. The pump station design improvements are both for reliability and energy and capacity. So we win on all three fronts of that. The energy consumption is going to be significantly reduced going forward for the life of this plant, and that's important. And then, last but not least, we are going to get a new rebate on some of this electrical equipment that we've installed. It's going to increase this efficiency. We'll be applying for that as soon as we get the billing from the contractor to submit to do, to show that we bought it and installed it and it's working. That's all I have for another day. I'll be glad to field questions for.
I think it's time for another road trip.
Come on out. We'll be glad to show you some of the other schedules.
I'll tell you, as I call it, the pump around that you saw was a whole lot more complicated than that future may be. And we're talking about environmental waste, environmental spills. That could be the ultimate environmental spill. Thinking that we're two rivers, and what we're pumping around, it was really a maze of pipes.
We ran the contractor through the wringer on the bypass pumping design because when they were installing this, I was out there watching. We put a manhole extension to give them enough time to respond. You were only about fifteen seconds from a spill at any given time if one of those pumps had died. It's become shocking. They put in the redundancy and the alarming and the switchover capability to keep that from happening. We ran bypassed it at South for seven or eight months. Didn't have any issues.
Too long as the pumps have been paid.
It was all rental, rentals. Sunbelt rental at South and Merceno Pump at East.
We shouldn't have to worry all that about.
Beautiful, good.
Bob, talk to me about what we were asking the council in terms of total of change orders.
Tomorrow night, we have on the agenda the change order, the final change order for a built-in project. We'll wrap up those numbers of short-term extension and finalize it at whatever seventy-five thousand hundred contract.
That's credit.
Credit. We'll be at the October fifteenth council meeting, I believe we talked about Harold. We bring a budget amendment request for the engineering fees and also for the hundred thousand contingency on the South Plant.
Any questions? Our next item is an issue which we at the council had spoke about when we began the process, especially with the Internet switch six. And Mr. Bateman will give you a history of where we were, where we are now, and how it all occurred, so.
Thank you, Harold. If you know, back in the back of the budget in the spring of two thousand and twelve, the council amended the. the council amended the privilege license schedule to impose a very popular statewide level of privilege license fees on their N six states, which were literally floating at the time. And prevailing rate being charged across the state was twenty-nine hundred dollars for the first machine and a thousand dollars for the machine thereafter. Substantive fees were paid, and zero run with, Frank, had a roughly four thousand dollars off. When it was done, we advised the county that this particular industry and the particular regulations were in a state of flux, and we did not really know whether the N six states would be allowed to continue from the level of privilege license taxing that we got held by the courts. And the answer to both of those questions were decided by the courts, and they declared that if we take the legal, we should shut them all down, but that was not a real problem for us, because the licensee has earned over the day. However, the court of appeals upheld the privilege license tax, and then the Supreme Court said that that license tax was unconstitutional in its face. It was a fact that raised the rate of these individuals by about fifty thousand percent and it bore no reasonable relationship to the cost of the term of the city. So that pretty much ended it. One brother case also lived in the courts and also began to fail under the constitution. That was done in the court of appeals. The law is pretty well settled that privilege licenses in the amount that we have level with the N six states are unconstitutional in face. We have been debating the proper course of action to take, and frankly, sometimes we debate a lot of the issue goes away, but this happened, didn't go away, we're not doing it. We have one lawsuit to, another they demand a refund. We have lawyer requests for two additional statutes demanding refunds, and frankly, based on the action of the Supreme Court, it's only, in my opinion, not economically feasible to litigate those issues. And with my recommendation to the council, we amend the privilege license schedule to delete classification of N six states and to delete the licensing charges that make that right to the disposition. Once that is done, unfortunately, the finance department's a manager suggestion, we held the funds in a separate pot, usually a money portfolio, in terms of, and with my recommendation, council that we developed some minimums of codes, deleting the classification of legal fees and refunding everybody who paid. A number of people have demanded a refund, asked for a refund, some have come up looking for it and turned away, but in fairness, everybody, if you're going to believe that certain things are going to be, everybody needs to be paid the same, that would be my recommendation.
Dollar for dollar?
No, no.
So everybody will be refunded, whether they've asked for it or not?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, that's the right thing to do.
And likewise, we put it to the council, instead of do that, we put it on the agenda moving on. They said they had one lawsuit pending and two more laws, you're going to file lawsuits. I don't mind the lawsuits.
Late dismissed.
Well, one of them is a more complex lawsuit, they're also trying to say that their game is legal and we shouldn't shut them down.
They still have that issue.
They still have that issue, but I think we'll win that issue too.
That's what it shows on the time.
Yes, we remember.
Is that same issue regarding the, their latest computer program? That's being tried not just here, but that's...
Yeah, off the state, about thirty thousand of lawsuits. And the strange thing about it was, we never showed it down in the system. I think that lawsuit played itself out of time in the other discussion on that. We found a loop in the application.
What was that, number four hundred thousand?
Roughly four hundred, Frank, you got it.
Those are not dollars that we pledged.
No, sir, they were not, those have been dollars of income or debt.
Roughly four hundred thousand.
And, you know, in arriving at that conclusion, the public, the public service agencies, how much did this cost, did we incur? Frankly, we did incur very much of this cost. Not nearly what we had anticipated that everybody would incur.
So they'll just go to the normal fee schedule that we have for everybody else?
Yes. Right now, we're not issuing the privilege licenses to anybody who files them, so none of them get them, and that's it.
Guys, we'll need to do a budget amendment?
Yes.
Does that money, has that money yet? Wouldn't?
It's said, we, instead of recognizing that money as revenue when it came in, we set it aside in a liability account. So all we have to do is write a check.
All right, move forward.
Any questions on that? All right. We, going forward, a couple of things have come up as a result of the community meetings. I'm not sure, I think Rachel reported you guys. I think in the whole park, there was discussion concerning street lawyers, which we were able to address, and I believe that is actually covered by something that used to be used by Rachel, as we, we've got a couple of notes from people sent, did come to the public meetings, were very, very appreciative of y'all's time and interested in some of the things they brought up, so. Honestly, I think going back and looking at our notes, we probably had better attendance this year than we ever had in previous years, and fairly consistent in terms of request orders and comments and so forth. But I would like to add, you know, we obviously do this every two years, but I would like you guys to think about, are you comfortable with that format going forward? I did have one lady write a note and said she would think it would be helpful if the council, in opening the meeting, would sort of give an overview of what you all saw, what we were at the city, and so just having comments back and forth, so.
Originally, when we first set that up, the whole thing was about us getting up from upstairs and going out in the community, it was their meeting to come to us. Then in the beginning, we didn't do a lot of answering questions like we do now. We just sort of let them talk, and then over time, we started answering some, so that was the whole approach of the format, was it was needed to be.
Well received, and you guys have comments on, we had them in, we moved around. I thought, Tarrant, I did a really nice job last Thursday night, I hope you're not. There in my facility, we were in North Park, opposite Bear Child in Canova Center, so any thoughts from the board or what is that? That being said, any questions about the agenda for tomorrow night? See you tomorrow night.